Meeting for February 20th, 2024. The order. Madam City Clerk, can we get the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu is absent. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse.
I was gonna say Mayor. Councilmember Yu for cause?
Second.
Motion is second. No objections. Councilmember Yu's excused for cause. Next, we have the invocation, which will be provided by our good friend Pastor Kelty from the Community of Christ Church. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Oh divine Creator, we thank you that we're able to meet here together this evening to conduct the business of the city of Temple City. We do so in order that we might provide direction to the community so that they might become a better community than it already is. Pleased to be with its staff so that they indeed might advise the council indeed and forward together in harmony to build a life worth living. It's for this reason we offer you this prayer this evening. May we see a world around us and the community in particular of your divine creation, and we are all its caregivers. Therefore, let this be our prayer this evening that through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, and the days to follow, it indeed may in tapping directions we might believe a community, a better community than the one we found. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have, we do not have any ceremonial matters tonight. And we move on to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who would wish to address the city council at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We move on to consent calendar. All items may be approved in a single motion unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any objections? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, public hearing, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. We move into new business, item 10A, to provide authorization to the city manager to enter into a joint use agreement with Temple City Unified School District for shared use of facilities.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. We are proud to bring to you tonight an 18-month agreement as we re-enter into a relationship with the Temple City Unified School District for shared use of facilities, both our facilities for the school district and the school district's facilities for many of our programs that are outlined in the staff report and in the scope of services. With that, Mayor, I'm gonna turn it over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Adam Matsumoto.
Thank you, City Manager Cook. Good evening, Mayor Mann and members of the city council. Before you today is a, we are seeking authorization to enter into an agreement with Temple City Unified School District for a joint use agreement for shared use of facilities. This has been a longstanding objective of the standing committee between the city and the Temple City Unified School District. We've been working through that process, you know, for over a year. And really, I would like to extend our gratitude with the newest superintendent of Temple City Unified, Dr. Arkuna, who's really pushed this forward with, in partnership with the city. The organism, the, the scope of service for the agreement really covers the existing programs that we currently operate from the city at Temple City Unified School Facilities. The two programs that we most utilize are for the Stars Program, the Stars Club Program. Currently, those operate at La Rosa Cloverly on Longdon. And we do have interest in, in offering that program as well at Emperor Elementary. Also included in part of our regular use is our winter youth basketball program. We do offer a youth basketball league that operates during the winter season, December through March, at the various elementary school sites, including Emperor. Those uses, at least most recently, we've had to cover the cost for facility use fees. In total, between those two programs, we've allocated roughly just under $89,000 for use fees for those specific programs. Temple City Unified has also utilized city facilities, most notably Live Oak Park, the picnic shelters, and open grass areas for end of the school year parties. And we've also hosted their Founder's Day event, the PTA Founder's Day event at the community center. And most recently, in-service training where all of the district employees come out for a training that occurs prior to the start of the school year in August. In the scope of service, we do include some other items that we wanted to include just as a precautionary measure, but we don't anticipate it actually impacting day-to-day use. As you know, the Temple City High School's gonna be doing a stadium renovation project starting at the end of this school year, going into the next school year. We've been told by the school district that they have already identified different locations that they're gonna be able to utilize fields that are outside of the city's fields. But we didn't want to include that just as a placeholder in case they might need to access Live Oak Park for the athletic fields. But we did stipulate that that would only occur during school hours and wouldn't impact any existing programs or organizations used, such as Temple City American Little League, or T-Casa, or AYSO, that typically use AYS, or Live Oak Park for their programs. The agreement, as City Manager Cook had mentioned, if approved by council and the school board, which meets on February 28th, would have a start date of March 1st and an ending term date as May 31st, 2025. We are, we do wanna use that as an evaluation period, so that's roughly, you know, a little under a year and a half to see if the agreement meets both needs of, of the organizations. And then we would have an opportunity to come back for an extension of that agreement prior to the expiration so we can continue that partnership into the future.
Adam, does that, what month does that year and a half take us into when it would be time to revisit?
So, the, the term ending in the agreement that's proposed is May 31st, 2025. But we would initiate discussions probably sometime in the beginning of the year in 2025 to gauge, you know, how both parties are feeling about the agreement and to have terms in place to be able to bring back an extension prior to the expiration.
Right, I was just wondering if that coincided with the end of school, and it does?
It does, yes. So, the school district traditionally has finished in June, but there's been a shift in their school year schedule and calendar. So now, the end of the school year for the district is actually the end of May.
Okay.
So that's why it's, that's why that date is listed as a, as a termination date.
I couldn't recall, thank you.
That concludes my report on the item. If the council has any questions, I'm here to answer any of those.
Okay. Thank you, Director Matsumoto. Yeah, we'll start with council questions. Councilmember Viscara, do you have any questions?
I really don't.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any other questions?
I think that was my only question. I called Brian with my questions that I had earlier today, so I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. Yeah, I also had several questions earlier, but those were answered by city manager and our city attorney. So, I do have one concern. And I, and I think, I know the answer, and I trust that, that Adam and his staff will keep this in mind, is the potential overuse for Live Oak Park. Because I know in the past, we've always said, well, it's kinda overused now, but then to add other teams and other things on there. But, but I trust that, I, I, just based on what you've said already, that that's gonna be something that you will keep an eye on and so that, you know, we don't overuse it and, and, you know, have a bigger problem down the road. It sounds like it's more of a, how should I say, just, just in case. They've made other arrangements, it sounds like, but not gonna necessarily rely on it. But maybe as a backup.
As a backup, maybe they might have some weather impacts.
Which I have no problem with. I mean, that seems reasonable. And then, and then I like the fact that, that we're only going to be using it, or we're only, this is only for a little over a year so we can see what we need to tweak and stuff. And hopefully, the next go-around, it'll be a longer agreement. So, okay, that's all. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, so thank, thank you for the presentation and summary. I will now open up the public comment. Does anyone wish to speak to the council or address the council on this specific agenda item? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. And we'll go into a final comments from council on this item, starting with Councilmember Viscar.
I still don't have it.
Are you okay in agreement?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Proceed.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank the committee that worked on this with the school district. And I think it's been a long time coming to have a joint use. And, I mean, it makes total sense. I know many other cities, the school district that I worked with partnered with, you know, soccer, many, baseball. Because they had a really nice feel at the junior high school. So I think it's just a great opportunity to share resources.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yeah, I too would like to thank Adam and his staff and certainly the staff at Unified School District for their efforts. Long time coming. Certainly something that we, we've been working on for a while. And it's nice to see that it's finally done. And, and I think it'll get better as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wholeheartedly concur. I think, I, I always go back to, there was this meeting a long time ago. I think this was before even I was on council. But I think the city, we were trying to do some strategic planning. And I remember it being at Longdon's Auditorium, I think. And the participants were asked to write on this sheet of paper, what were the main things or goals that they wished that the city would, would concentrate on? People would write it down, and then they would get these stickers, kinda like what we ask people to vote on for the playground, different themes. And people would put a sticker next to the issue they thought was of the most importance. And the one that had the most sticker that stood out was better collaboration between Temple City Unified School District and the city, like by far. And I think tonight, this represents a culmination of that effort. And understandably so, I think it takes the right people in the right place at the right time. So, I wanna thank everyone from the school district side, our fellow standing committee members, as well as the superintendent, Dr. Kuna. And of course, Director Matsumoto and, and City Manager Cook for your hard work in cranking that out. I really appreciate it.
I just. I do have one procedural question.
Sure, sure.
Go ahead, you can finish if you want.
Sure, I just have one, kinda like, comment and more, more for like, long-term consideration. I don't want it to impact what we have in front of us now. But one, one question I get sometimes from residents is, they always talk about other, other neighboring cities, like say Arcadia or Duarte. And they, they appear to have a similar type of agreement, but it's, in a way, it's like the reverse, where you have the public use of school facilities on non-school days. But I don't really understand where that really fits in the larger scheme of things. Like, is that really a joint use agreement between the city and the school? Or does the school simply just open it up for public use? Like, say a track, right?
Was that using it like a park?
Well, like, like, say, take like, the, the track, right? So, in some schools, they open that up, and then the community would just go for a walk. And they would go onto the track and walk. But I, I don't know the details about how, how that works. So, that's just the, I mean, I don't know, Director Matsumoto, you were coming up to the mic.
Isn't, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that part of the civic, what do they call it, Civic Center Act or something like that?
The Civic Center Act. I do want to give Director Matsumoto a chance, but, but yes, it's, there can be just pure, open, public use under what's called the Civic Center Act, which applies only to school districts and public school sites. And different districts and their cities have interpreted those in different ways.
Many of those arrangements, they have, you know, different ways of operation. Sometimes it's the school district that takes it upon their own that they wanna provide that community access. But more commonly, it typically is a joint use because there's usually a need for some oversight during non-school hours. And we've kind of experienced that with some of our other facility access situations with Temple City Unified is, at some point, you know, the school district employees will stop working. And then if you're keeping it open, then who would oversee that? So that's typically where that joint use comes into play. And typically, it's a municipal agency that might come in and, and backfill that gap to be able to allow for public access.
Although, I would give you an example, Fernando, you probably remember this. Remember, and I don't know if they still do this, you used to go jog in the morning at the high school, and the gate was open. Or maybe you just broke in, I don't know.
We just broke in.
Oh, okay. But I thought that, that was one of those public uses that really the city wasn't involved in. But I don't know if the school district just turned the other way, or it's something that, that they could do on their own if they wanted to. It has nothing to do with us.
For a long while, they, they would open one gate, obscure gate, in the evening.
I thought it was in the morning, that too.
But, but in, in the morning that I'm aware of, they didn't.
A lot of people would go and walk around the track and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, just, just considering the lack, or we're, we're still considered park poor despite all of our efforts to increase that. And, and we, we see from, ever since we put in the walking track at Live Oak Park.
I think they use that more often than going to the high school.
Yeah, but I'm saying just location-wise, if it were open and accessible, I'm almost certain someone's, someone in the community would use that. But of course, with all respect to the school district, I could see it brings other concerns as well.
I would, I would say that, let's see how this works. And if those things do arise, we can take them and make suggestions to the school. You know, like, for example, we could say, go back to them and say, you know, a lot of our residents have come to us and said, you know, it'd be nice to have the track open in the morning to walk around in or something like that, to see if they were accommodated. Doesn't have to necessarily, doesn't even, as well as I can say, doesn't even have to be part of our use agreement, but they could do that on their own.
Was there a policy right now?
Civic Center Act. I don't know how, I don't know what their policy is, and that. I would doubt that they would do that. To me, I would make much sense. I don't know that I would open the campus, any part of the campus, to the public without somebody being there, from a liability standpoint. I don't think they would wanna do that, anyway.
I think at the very least, you would need some sort of fencing between, say, fields or a dirt track, and then the remainder of campus. To your point, Mayor Protem, there was a time that I can remember being able to go on public grammar school campuses and play basketball on eight-foot rims, which was fun when I was in high school. Because I could actually slam dunk. I can't imagine Temple City Unified allowing high schoolers to play on eight-foot rims.
Unfortunately, those days are, seem to be gone. Yeah, I can remember those times, too.
But having wide-open fields where kids could run and play pickup soccer, and having the track open is certainly a stronger possibility, but may require some kind of capital commitment to fence that area off. So yes, Mr. Mayor will absolutely look at that. I've taken notes, look at that as we're looking to the future agreement.
I think the use, the use is a good list to start with. But there could be things that could either add later, or you would take away, maybe.
I think we need to wait until the 28th or whatever date is, just when school board.
Well, that's the other thing I was gonna bring up. Well, how, how is this procedurally? Because they're not gonna, I believe it's tomorrow they're gonna listen to this? Or is it next week?
28th.
Oh, 28th. So, so as approving it tonight, if they, if they don't approve it, or they wanna add or take away, what does that, where does that leave us?
Then if, if there's some, something that's material, then we would have to bring that back to the, to the council. But we don't anticipate any material changes. We have, between our staffs, we have what I would call a tentative agreement and understanding between both parties. So, the same exact document is going to the school board, and we anticipate approval.
Well, somebody's gotta go first, obviously.
Yeah, somebody's gotta go first. We're dipping, we're dipping our feet, feet in the water. Or toe in the wa, toe in the pool.
And, and thank you, Mr. Murphy, for, for that, for that feedback. And I think the other X-factor or variable is they're going to completely renovate that field in the coming year anyway. So, in terms of the configuration and the concerns you brought up, Mr. Murphy, that could likely change depending on how they redo that area. So, so yeah, if, if we could just keep an open mind about that.
Keep an open mind, absolutely.
See how it turns out, and, you know, we'll revisit that in the future.
Will do.
All right. All right, with that, we could entertain a, a motion.
I would make a motion that we provide authorization to city manager to enter into a joint use agreement for shared use of facilities with the Temple City Unified School District as proposed.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no objections, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. So, also, you'll, you'll keep a surprise of the school board discussion and result?
Yes, either you'll receive an email from either myself or Mr. Matsumoto letting you know about the results of the school board. But again, we don't, we anticipate approval coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, item 10B, which is implementation of the Temple City Quality of Life and Temporary Park Bans Ordinance. So, hand it over back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. Tonight, on your consent calendar, you approved the second reading of two ordinances, one of which deals with general quality of life issues and the ability of city staff and the sheriff's department in order to go through both, first, a warning process and the ability to try to get compliance, and if necessary, with repeated habitual behavioral issues, not status-based, but behavioral issues that we're seeing in our public right-of-way and in our parks, using the final step of actually filing charges in court through our city prosecutor. We have had extensive discussions with our city prosecutor. They are very, have extensive experience in many cities that they serve, including a decade-long process, or experience in Downey and Norwalk, where they found that this process is very, very successful. If you think of it similar to the way we deal with our code enforcement, our successful code enforcement efforts and community enhancement efforts with properties. We look for compliance first. We make all the steps we can to ensure compliance first. And that's why less than about 2% or 3% of our cases actually go to the city prosecutor's office. We're looking, and we are using kind of the same framework and mindset with these two ordinances as well. Obviously, if there's something that reaches to the level that there is an immediate danger to the public, we will, our public safety team and our sheriff's department will address that. But if there is this, if there are habitual folks who, this is your fourth, third, or fourth time drinking in public, are doing stuff that's not a, not an immediate danger to the public, but is impeding in the ability for the public to utilize a facility or utilize, or the public right-of-way, that's when we're going to act. And again, in talking with this, with the city prosecutor's office, we do not see too many filings, because again, we wanna get to compliance first. Filing is the last step that we wanna take. But that should meet within our city prosecutor's budget that we have existing. So, and any other questions that you may have? I'm here, and from a legal standpoint, my colleague, the city attorney, is here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's city attorney. I was gonna say, wait, I don't see a city attorney.
All right, we'll start with council questions. Councilmember Sternquist?
I have a question regarding mental health issues with the people that are continually or habitually causing problems. Is there a point where maybe if they reach their second offense and we know that they're having some disabilities, that we refer them to Locata or the services that we have? Or should we consider that as part of the program?
That's a great question, Councilmember Sternquist. And yes, that is, that is our, that is our approach right now.
Okay.
That, this is just that final, final step in a process. So, if they are a danger to themselves or the public, we would actually call out the LA County Sheriff's Mental Evaluation Team as well, the MET team. We've had to do that on a couple occasions in the last few years. But it does have to reach kind of a, and I'm gonna use the wrong term, but clinical threshold level as well. But usually, it, usually if the call-out is for that MET team, if they're available, they will come out. But yes, we, to, to answer your question, we will be taking those steps as well. Locata does come out once a week on Wednesdays, does provide clinical help for the person and is willing to do intake as well. And we've had some success stories. We've had some cases in progress, I'll describe them as. And so, yes, we'll continue to take those steps.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
So, when you say Locata comes out here, where do they come? To the park, or where are they?
So, they, they will usually, they will contact our sheriff's team just to let them know generally where they're at. They will, I, usually, a lot of times, they will have identified specific areas of town, some near Lower Z's and the railroad tracks. If they know, if they know some individuals are still in and around some of our public facilities, and identify those, and try to make contact or re-contact those individuals that they either have, have created a relationship with for clinical services, be it medication, or trying to get a driver's license, or other things.
So they don't have a, the same place they meet?
No.
They identify, for want of a better term, a problem area? And they go to that area?
Yes.
To resolve whatever issues are?
Right.
Because that's where they are?
Exactly.
Okay.
They meet them where they're at.
Okay, all right. Second question I have is, who's gonna keep track of these contacts that we make to determine that this is their first, second, third, you know, contact with this individual?
That will be, that will be, that will be within the public safety division.
So we are.
So we are, we are staff. And we're gonna, and, and working with, in particular, working with our special assignment team, we'll, we'll be tracking that internally.
So the sheriff's department's not gonna track it?
No, we'll, 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 we'll make sure that we, they'll, they'll, we will work in coordination with the sheriff's department, but inevitably, because we are filing, the city prosecutor is filing the cases on behalf of the city, we will be tracking those.
Okay, but let's say a sheriff deputy makes a contact under these, under these ordinances. Well, there would be some way for them to notify the city?
Right, and that's where we're relying.
Okay, here's another strike against this guy or woman.
Again, we're looking for compliance and a behavior change.
No, I understand, but somebody's gotta keep track of them so that we know that it's, it's becoming a more serious situation.
And our, our special retirement team knows, and this is part of the process. So they, they will be contacting and working with both the patrol deputies and the traffic deputies, whoever makes those stops or, and, and, or those issues, those citations.
So is that already in place, or is this something we're gonna?
We're, we're, we're aware of it now. We'll, we'll formalize it more in the next 30 days.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscar?
Yeah, just a little follow-up on that. I'm trying to picture how that even works. I mean, you know, do, do merchants call, let's say it's happening, or there's a merchant. Do they call us, and then we call the sheriffs, or?
If it's in the commercial right-of-way, or if it's a commercial property, if it's on a private property, depending on if they have letter, and actually, we're gonna be working with our city prosecutor on some updates to our letters of agency as well, which allows for a law enforcement agency, in this case, the sheriff's department, to address somebody who's in a, in private property. So, generally speaking, yes, it should be a call to the sheriff's department. It should be a call to their business line, as long as it's a non-emergent or non-emergency issue. If it's an emergency issue, obviously, 911.
Something has to be going on, though, right?
Yes. There's somebody, if somebody is. Yes, there's somebody, if somebody is, you know, in the, in this case violating some of the, um, behavioral, um, issues that are described in the ordinance, that's would have to be reported.
You know, I was just kind of wondering, because on my night walks, which I've talked about a lot, I see them all the time on the street, in, in the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
And I, I guess unless they're causing some kind of disturbance, just leave them alone.
Again, there are, uh, be, speaking very plainly, uh, for those who are experiencing homelessness, um, they, there's many people who experience homelessness who are using our public facilities lawfully uh, and doing that, and, um, they are welcome here and they are welcome to use those, those facilities and our, our public right of way lawfully. This is, this is the issue of dealing with the unlawful use of facilities and the habitual constant, uh, disregard for some of our laws and procedures and that's what we're trying to address with these ordinances.
Laundry man always comes to mind.
And we've been, and we've had some challenges there and, um, continue to work there with some illicit behavior that has happened on the, on that corner. Um, deputy Boo and our special team, deputy Boo's here and our special team has dealt with that several times over the last few years. And this is just another tool to, again, warn them, say, here's another tool we have, we want to help you. Here's the services we have to help you. Again, here's the services we have. And, um, what will be exciting too is pretty soon, we will, we just put out the notice of availability most recently for the PLHA funds. And, um, there will be, uh, family promise was here, but it may not be family promise, but it'll be another service that will provide another menu of services along, beyond just what Locata is providing. But another menu of services to those who are experiencing homelessness or are having other issues that we'll be able to provide to them again, and, and that offer of help, that offer of assistance, that offer of a hand up.
That's it?
Thank you. So if this moves forward, when, when is it in effect?
This is, uh, with your passage of the ordinances and consent calendar, this would be effective thirty days from now.
Thirty days from now, okay. And, uh, a s- a similar follow-up question to Mayor Potem's question about tracking.
Mm-hmm.
Do you foresee or anticipate this being something that would be part of future law enforcement monthly meetings or do you think that should be discussed in a different context?
I think that's a great suggestion, Mayor Man, and I think, yes, that would be part of the overall qual. We have a quality of life element in, in our law enforcement meetings. So yes, that would be, I mean, obviously, in some cases, similar to how we deal with the, describe the individual cases, we, we may mask, we will mask the identities and other things as well, but we'll, we will let you know of the issues that we were facing because this is, this is a law enforcement mechanism, right? Or this is, this is a mechanism and an additional tool from a law enforcement side. So yeah, we'll be reporting those back to you.
Well, not only the issue, those, the numbers probably.
The numbers as well, yeah, obviously, and again, protecting the identity of the individuals, especially with some of the sensitive issues that we're dealing with, that the ordinance deals with from a perhaberal standpoint. We want to protect their identities and we want to protect them even though they will be filed upon. But, you know, again, this is an issue of trying to get towards compliance, not immediately punishing.
And my last question is, should we proceed and it moves forward as described here where these things are handled by the pro, city prosecutor on a monthly basis?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, can you describe to us how that information gets back to you? City, like what, what actually happens after subsequent to these filings? Is, is there like immediately a result that, that the city prosecutor can report back to us and say, like I'm trying to imagine like what exactly that?
Sure, and I'll, and my colleague, uh, Mr. Murphy can fill in the gaps. But what, from what I, our conversations with the city prosecutor's office is that we will know what's being filed. We'll have the list and the descriptions of those two or three or four cases that are being filed. We'll know that before they go to their court date. After their court date, a lot of times, individuals will not show up. So many times, there's what's called a bench warrant that's issued for their arrest. And then they'll be brought into court. Um, the sheriff's department will have to physically go out and get that individual to come to court as well. So, um, that's, that's one mechanism and it seems to be, uh, a lot of the process that the city prosecutor goes through. Um, and then for those individuals who do come to court, um, that will be, the process will be, uh, laid out and, and adjudicated.
Okay, and then that, that will, that information will be retained and?
Yes, we'll have all that information as a report from the city prosecutor's office to us. Obviously, we'll have our city attorney just take, uh, even though there's, he, we're performing a different role here, but just, just to keep the city attorney's, uh, office informed as well, make sure they know what's happening. Um, and reporting that back to both the city attorney's office and to the city council.
Yeah, because, because I think where, where I, I'm going with it is granted, in, in the last meeting's presentation, part of, at least for me, uh, one of the convincing reasons to, to adopt this ordinance was because some other cities have had some success to it. So I don't want to presume that we're going to have the same success. I actually want us, want for success to be defined by the actual numbers, the, the data.
Yeah.
And if we're not tracking it, then we won't know where exactly we're going.
Absolutely, we will.
Because granted, if, if it kind of goes south, then as a council, we have a responsibility to really look, look at this and go, okay, well, what's working, what's not working?
Absolutely.
Well, I, I would maybe go along, to follow that up and to follow up what you said earlier about, uh, at the, uh, monthly meeting. It might be something that we just add on as a part of the monthly meeting. It is a kind of relevant to what we discuss.
Great idea.
Quality of life and, and, and just have a section there, okay? Here are the numbers, this is what we've encountered, this is where we're going.
Yep.
You know, and unfortunately, with the system, and Greg probably can say this as well, doesn't always run that quickly. Uh, I mean, if sure, if, if the guy, if whoever cited doesn't show up and let's say a bench warrant is issued, sometimes that bench warrant isn't actually enforced always real quickly. Could take a while to catch up if they do find them, of course, and they'll bring them in. And then obviously, all of these people have a right to a hearing.
Absolutely.
And who knows, I don't know what the court's calendar is on these things, but it's not going to happen in the immediate future. They'll set it for some time down the road. Um, I doubt that the guy will stay in jail, I don't know. I don't think there's going to be, is there a bail on these things? I guess there could be, I guess. Depends on if he comes in voluntarily or not, but, um, so yeah, so I, I think with some of these cases, I would envision that from time we cite them till the time they go to court and time it's resolved. It could be months.
Yep.
You know, but, but, but that's okay as long as we have some type of, uh, to your point, it's kind of a status report of where these cases are and how many are going through the system and what's happening to these cases.
And, and as the captain said, w- when word gets out that extreme cases are getting actually prosecuted, uh, the extreme cases are less likely to happen.
And that's the goal, obviously, I think, of the whole thing, so.
And so even having the filing, having the bench warrant issued, um, the first time or two that a bench warrant is actually acted upon by the sheriffs in concert with the city prosecutor's office, to where they, they have an idea of where people are, the city prosecutor's free that day, they go to the courthouse and wait for one or two people to be brought in. Word gets out quickly and then some of the bigger quality of life issues perhaps stopping such issues, uh, which, as you say, sir, is, is the goal.
Yeah, and, and I think just as we progress forward, it would also be nice for you to share with us maybe some of staff's perspective with respect to how this is impacting them, how they're taking it, as well as the, the sheriffs or deputies' perspective on, on how that's working. Because they're, they're the ones actually enforcing, implementing and carrying this out. So we're here looking at it at a policy angle and making a lot of assumptions, but we need to kind of match that with reality with what's on, what's actually happening. So if you could help us connect the two together as this moves forward, as we get more data, that would also help us make better decisions moving forward.
Absolutely, well, it's a kind of an iterative, iterative process, right? In that sense, that we're, we're, we're giving you the field data information, you're making sure that's in concert with the policy.
All right.
So that today's, and any other, I, I think I got some good feedback, just, just receive and file.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Viscara, did you have anything?
Nothing further, I think we've, I understand what's happening. And yes, I approve.
All right, thank you. Can, can we get a motion for this item?
I think it's just a receive and file.
Is it receive and file? Okay, thank you. All right, so we won't need a motion for that. And so we move on to update from our city manager. Tonight, we have the Community Development Department Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor Man and members of council. Just real quick, uh, briefly, there's a lot of activity this weekend, uh, coming up. Our sister city from Taiwan will be with us starting Friday. Uh, they will be in the parade and they will be performing on Saturday. Camellia Festival Friday, Saturday and Sunday, a lot of activity, so, but, um, I'll let. So you do receive a monthly report from the Community Development Department. Um, this is Mr. Reamer's annual report on all the activity of our Community Development Department. So I'll go briefly over that annual report for you. If that's okay, Mayor Man.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I would go over all the activities we're doing with you, but that would take way too long and you'd get bored. So I'll just summarize what we've been up to in 2023. Um, just for overview perspectives, a lot of the indicators that we typically look at in terms of Community Development Department, um, have been on the rise or are near the peak. Um, that includes, uh, permit valuation, the number of permits issued, uh, the number of planning applications we've received, the planning commission's activity. All of those things are at very high levels. Um, what we have seen though is while we're, have a lot more things happening, um, the size of projects has not increased. So we were seeing smaller, a lot of, a lot smaller projects, but more of them. So a lot of accessory dwelling units and, um, small additions to houses rather than like large multifamily projects, those types of things.
Do you think interest rates are affecting that?
Uh, could be interest rates having, uh, a large impact on construction and multifamily development, uh, yep.
Well, that and maybe the lack of large open spaces.
Yes.
Those are kind of limited in our city as well.
That's true, that's true.
But that comes with tear downs.
Yeah.
Um, also in 2023, uh, we made some progress on some advanced planning projects and made a lot of great progress on street repaving. So, uh, we'll turn the page and get into some of, um, some of the more detailed, uh, parts of this. So, uh, in terms of permit valuation, so when someone fills out a building permit, they tell us the value of the work that's being done, how much it's going to cost them. What we've seen is a seventeen percent increase in building permit valuation. So that's a good sizable increase of people reinvesting in their community. Um, also, the number of permits issued is up over 2022 and over 2021. Since 2021, we've seen a thirty-three percent increase in the number of permits issued. Um, as you would expect, the number of permits being finalized is also increasing.
Scott, doesn't, uh, if you go back to the, doesn't the increase in building permit valuation also increase the taxes that are going to be?
Uh, yes.
An increase in taxes as well?
It could, if the property's being reassessed, then it would, it would result in additional property tax.
Don't they normally reassess the properties when there's a, when there's additional improvements made?
Yes, if someone's doing an addition, there's, the whole property is not reassessed, it's just that portion.
Portion, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a paper exercise, right?
Uh, yes, the, we send all of our building permits to the county assessor's office and then they, they go out and do their assessment.
Oh, they physically go?
I don't think they physically go out there, but they look over the permits and then they reassess accordingly.
The owner hasn't provided, uh, information on that to them, yeah.
Um, so again, here we can see, um, in the chart, in the bar graph is the total fees being paid. Uh, in the line graph is the total valuation, so valuation is up, but still, um, kind of low in terms of the last ten years. Um, building fees paid is, um, on the lower end as well.
Do you think COVID had an impact on that, on this?
Um, definitely, in 2020, uh, we saw, um, a sizable decrease in building fees being paid and valuation. Um, but it's also important to remember, um, 2016, 2017, 2018 were abnormally high years in terms of building permit fees paid and valuation. We had some very large projects going on, um, Camellia Square, Linden Walk, Blossom Walks are very large. So that's why those numbers are a little bit higher, kind of threw off the average. And then this shows in the gray line, the number of permits being issued and in the pink line or magenta line, the permits being finalized. Um, so you can see both are going up, permits issued is way up, um, in comparison to 2020.
When you say permits final, does that mean the project is done?
It's done, yeah. Typically, there's a significant lag, uh, usually a year or two between the permit final date and the permit issuance date.
Are we talking new construction?
New construction, yes, sir. Uh, in terms of housing construction, um, we've seen the city's first mixed-use project completed in 2023. Um, it's the highest number of multifamily or mixed-use housing units constructed in the last ten years. A lot of ADUs, um, in fact, we approved more ADUs in 2023 than we have in any prior year, uh, but very few single-family units, um, being built, single-family dwelling units. So here's a graph showing that, um, in the bottom, red color is single-family. You can see only four new units being built, this is net new. Uh, multifamily, seventy-four units. Uh, the next highest year was back all the way in 2015 when we built sixty-seven units. Um, and then the number of ADUs, uh, started in 2017, um, but in 2023, we completed, uh, forty-five accessory dwelling units.
Scott, with those forty-five accessory dwellings, do you know what the parking, um, percentage is? I mean, do all of them, have all of them asked for two cars?
I, I, I don't happen to know that, yeah, it's not something we keep track of in our planning, um, files.
Also related to this ADU issue, um, Greg, what, what's the status on that new bill that's, uh, being proposed? Uh, I think you had mentioned it a while back regarding, uh, uh, splitting them off and you could now sell the ADU separate from the, um...
Right, so that, that bill said that a city, uh, at a local jurisdiction, a city or county, could by ordinance allow for the separate sale.
Okay.
Um, to date, I've not brought that to you because I haven't thought.
So it is the law, they can do that.
They, they can.
Cities can do that.
Cities, cities have that, uh, you have that authority and, um, like so many things in the state planning world, it may be that they change from giving you the authority to forcing you to do it, but at least for now, they're recognizing that different cities will want to see that issued different ways. Um, one of the situations in which we believe it makes sense, uh, in, in many areas, um, but not in a predominantly single-family residential community like yours, um, the change four or five years ago to add ADUs in multifamily, um, complexes. Um, if a multifamily complex goes through a conversion to a condo conversion or even if an ADU is built in what is otherwise a condoized multifamily development, it doesn't make sense for that ADU to have to be sold with a quote, "primary" unit. In a condo development, it makes sense for the ADU to be separately sold. Doesn't always make sense, uh, on a single-family residence to have to somehow figure out how to share the yard space between two completely separate ownerships, so.
Does the new law could allow you to pick and choose and say, yes, you can do it for this, but not for this?
That's an interesting question, I would have to go back and look. I, I don't know that it, it actually has thought it that far out.
And of course, we're not to that point yet anyways, so we're kind of putting that.
So Greg, if someone came to the counter tomorrow, say, we're open tomorrow, right? And said, listen, there's this new state law and I want to sell my ADU, what would we do?
Um, I, I believe that the director and his team know that our ordinance does not allow that. And so know that cannot be separately sold. There's only one assessor's parcel number and the entire lot would have to be sold, um, as one.
Could Greg?
Yes.
Can you convert an ADU to a condo?
Uh, again, I, I don't know frankly, how else we could set up an ordinance that would... that would allow it to be separately sold. Do you, other than having some sort of a condo map to create two parcels and then a shared open space?
Yeah, yeah, that's basically how it would be done. But under under the existing ordinance, it would not be allowed. You could not convert an ADU to a condominium under the existing ordinance.
And we can keep that ordinance.
Oh, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We. And many cities are.
Any change unless, my office is planning no change unless you direct me to bring that for discussion and then ultimate change. We we think that, our understanding is you would like it to stay the way it is.
And I I have a question. When it says negative five single-family units, what does that mean?
Uh, so that means there were more units demolished than constructed that year.
I see. Interesting, okay. And my second question is, if someone did a teardown and simultaneously built a new single-family and ADU, does it, do we count one each on these numbers or is it considered just new single-family?
So if there's an existing single-family house and it's torn down and somebody builds one house and an ADU, we would only count the ADU?
Oh, because it's net.
Net new.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you.
The next section is the top permits issued. In a, in the past years, fi- five years ago, six years ago, this would usually include a lot of multifamily projects. And so this, this slide demonstrates that we've seen a dramatic shift in.
So this is top by monetary?
Yes, by valuation, yeah. So in this version, we've seen our top one is a tenant improvement for a produce packing plant down on Gidley. And then the next one after that is the 9465. It's a 5,800 square foot commercial portion of the mixed-use development. That's the mixed-use project next to Cloverly in Las Tunas. After that is a small condominium development and then everything after that is single-family, except for the last one on Primrose, which is a three-unit condo again.
What about the development on Rosemead across from the old Denny's? That's not on this list.
Right, because those permits were issued many years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's just the permits that were issued in 2023. So you can see from this slide that a lot of our projects are much smaller in 2023.
Our three, the three-unit condominium developments, do condominiums have to be attached or can they be like the P, the PUDs behind my house?
They they can be either attached or detached.
Well, they can be detached.
Yeah.
Question. The, the 1.5.
I don't know.
You said, you said that was Cloverly?
Uh, the corner of Cloverly and Las Tunas, the mixed-use project there.
And that, that's all it is?
Well, there's actually going to be four permits issued for the property. They only pulled one of the permits and that was for the commercial portion. They'll be pulling the permits for the other portions within the next six months.
So that'll be up around six or?
That'll show up on the 2024 numbers, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the residential portion's going to be the most expensive permit, yeah. In terms of customer service activity, in 2023, the Community Development Department serviced 5,100 people, almost 5,200 people at the counter. That's just at the counter. The biggest portion of that is the building staff who helped about 2,300, 2,400 people. And then after that, it's planning at around 1,800 people. And then our other services that are most commonly used are business license and parking tickets and parking permits.
So these are all in-person, face-to-face contacts?
Yes, sir.
Because aren't some of these things done online?
Yes.
So those numbers aren't included in it?
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah.
And how does this compare to previous years? Are we up, down, not the same?
That's a good question. It probably up because ever since 2020, when City Hall was closed, we weren't getting a lot of people then.
For those years, yeah.
Yeah, and so we've, we've definitely been getting more customers since then. Business licenses issued, we issued 60 new business licenses in 2023, which is above the previous years. And business license renewals were similar, around 1,100. Planning commission hearings, the planning commission has been very busy in 2023. You can see the only other year that they had more planning commission hearing cases was back in 2016. In 2023, the planning commission had 12 conditional use permit cases. Again, that was more CUP cases than any other year except for 2016. Also, a lot of site plan reviews, site plan reviews are projects, new construction projects. And then some tentative maps, that's when somebody wants to subdivide a property or airspace to do condos. And then eight other, those tend to be either, those tend to be extensions of previous entitlements. So when sometimes those permits are going to expire and then they come back for an extension.
I could ask, what's a zone text amendment?
A zone text amendment is simply when we change the zoning code.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why you went back to 2015 or is there?
I just, that's when our permit system was set up. So I don't have numbers, good numbers before that. Number and type of planning applications received. This is just to generally show you that most of the cases we receive, almost 75 to 80% are what are called zoning clearances. These are types of projects that are either reviewed over the counter or we take them in and they're reviewed within a couple of weeks. This is what we would be done for someone's just doing a house addition or an accessory dwelling unit. About 10% of our cases are signed permits. And then the site planner reviews, either major or minor, is when somebody's either doing an addition or complete new construction. So that only makes up about 10% of the work that the planners do in terms of total cases. But those cases obviously take a lot more time. And then just wanted to go over you, with you, some significant projects in 2023 and where they stand. 4447 Ellis Lane is a four-unit condominium project over by the Home Depot. That project is still under construction.
Hold on, go back, go back. So which, the picture is which one?
Yeah, this picture is the top slide. And as we go through the list, we'll see the next picture.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that graffiti on that fence?
Unfortunately, yes, yeah, but this picture is quite old, so. This, this has been a particularly difficult site, I can say.
The guys, the guys that did that are adults now.
Yeah, right. Actually, that look, doesn't look too bad, I mean.
4910 Encinita, this is the one over by the city yard, so kind of further south on Encinita. This is a six-unit condo project that's under construction and is making pretty good progress moving along.
Scott, how do you? I know, I know a condo can, when it's detached, what does it have to be to call it a condo? It has to have a shared driveway?
A condominium is when you either subdivide airspace or land and the land is held in common by the homeowners association.
Oh.
So if it's, sometimes we'll have what some people call a PUD, where you subdivided the land into smaller, kind of like air parcels. But then the driveway is owned by the HOA, sometimes the front yard is all owned by the HOA along with the driveway.
So when they come to get a permit for a condo project, they have to have an HOA in place?
Yes, that's part of the tentative parcel map or tentative tract map requirements is that the HOA, the, they have to submit the HOA rules, the CCNRs. And those are reviewed by the city attorney's office once they're signed off. That's one of the requirements before it comes to you as the council to approve the final map.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Do we know what the sale price of these units are going to be now or is that just market will bear when they're done?
Yes, the, at this point, we don't know what the sales price will be.
It depends on their size.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure there's a lot of thing going on there. They're not going to be cheap.
That's correct.
Are they popular for sales?
Yeah, yeah, there's not a lot on the market right now. So I'm sure anything that's for sale is going to be picked up very quickly.
Okay.
Inventory is very low. 9441 Las Tunas, this is where the facade had collapsed previously and we've got a whole new facade improvement to the shopping center. That was completed in 2023.
Is that all done now?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks, it looks good.
It looks nice.
Yeah, it is. It looks, it looks pretty good.
Did they lose any tenants as a result of this or?
I, no, actually, one of the tenants actually moved to another location and has expanded throughout the process. But yeah, they all were able to stay in place during construction.
Is it fully rented out now or is it?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
What we see from from the coffee shop is the back of these buildings, right?
Yes.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, yes.
What coffee shop?
But the new project, what's that?
The, the new project kind of wraps the, wraps around the Cloverleaf Bakery.
But will we see those messed up walls?
No, because that project will be in front of the wall, yeah.
Scott, for the previous project at Encinita, do you recall if that was a portion, that the zoning was changed during the last general plan update to, was that the industrial area?
It, it could be, or it could be right on the edge, but yeah, this was, this is this area that was changed from industrial to R2.
Are we looking east or?
You're looking, yes, east. Thank you. And then lastly, this is 9465 Las Tunas. This is the project, Councilmember Viskara, that you were talking about. Plans for this were approved back in 2023 and we issued the permit for the commercial component.
Is there a tentative completion date on that?
No.
No.
The, we're hoping that they pull the rest of the permits by June.
So.
So probably a year, year and a half from June. Really depends on the contractor and the owner, how aggressive they are. Also, in 2023, 9334 Lower Azusa, the auto body shop, that was final at the beginning of the year. 5,300 Rosemead, this was the site of the former Temple City Powersports or Motorsports. 5,300 Rosemead, this is now a new medical office building. It went through an addition, a remodel and a facade improvement. So that was completed a few months ago. 5,570 Rosemead, this is the mixed-use project across from the former Denny's, across from GW Supermarket and Choose Fitness. That was final in December.
What are they doing on rentals and stuff? Do we know?
You know, the commercial component, we haven't heard a lot from tenants. We just had a call this today from somebody looking to lease one of the tenant spaces. I know they've rented some of the units, but I don't know what occupancy rate they are right now.
As of now, there's no commercial on the first floor.
That's correct, yeah.
Do you recall how how large that commercial space was on the ground?
I think it's around, well, I think it's about 10,000 square feet, yeah.
Okay.
It's quite a bit.
It's big.
And from just the rule standpoint, is there? I guess, how can they break that up into multiple?
Certainly, yeah, they can.
That's at their discretion?
Yeah, they can divide it into more units or less units. There is a requirement that a minimum unit size is 800 square feet.
800, okay.
The, one of the things that kind of binds them is the parking requirements. When they set up the development, they plan for these units not to be restaurant space. Otherwise, it would have had to have a lot more parking.
Not to be restaurants.
Right, yeah, so we, one of the first tenants we heard from was a restaurateur who wanted to open. We said, well, there's not going to be enough parking then. So, but it could be a smaller food service, takeout, kind of fast food, has a different parking standard. So if it's less than so many square feet, there's a different standard.
I can't picture where that is.
Yeah, that's the one we went to. Didn't you go to, you went to that?
It's that building?
It's the one we went to, yeah. You know, we'd go there, I think it's, in Pasadena, they have one of those places where it's all these restaurants, but you order the food from there and you just pick it up. Like, like they have Stonefire Grill, what's the name of that place in Pasadena? It's a, they have Stonefire Grill there, they have.
It's, it's the kitchen on the.
Kitchen. United. Where they actually, the rest, and I don't know how they do it, but they have 10 restaurants that you can buy their food through that place and you just walk in and you pick it up. And no, there is no parking problem because you don't stay there, you just pick it up.
You're just coming out.
That would be a good location for something like that. It's on, what is on?
Madison and Gray.
Madison, yeah, it's right there in the, in the district area, the Playhouse District area.
We can mention that to the owner.
Yeah, something like that would be.
So would that be similar to that new dumpling place in Camellia Square? Where they're mostly to-go?
The what place?
There's that dum- dumpling restaurant that that opened last year?
Uh, under the city, you're talking about the parking code issues? Yeah, so the smaller food service places like the Poki Place at Temple City Marketplace, the ones that are smaller in size and they just do mostly kind of fast casual. Those tend to use the lower parking requirements rather than the full-service restaurant requirements.
I see, okay.
And then the last one on this slide is 5665 Rosemead, GW Supermarket and Choose Fitness. This was basically completed in 2023. This is where they did the interior remodel, the facade improvements and the landscaping improvements.
Still no opening or anything like that? What's the status on that?
GW, the building inspector was out there today to do the final inspection. They want to start stocking the shelves, so they're getting very close, yeah.
And the gym is not open yet either.
The gym is open.
The gym is open.
They didn't do, they didn't do a grand opening, they didn't do a grand opening, but.
So they're operating.
They've been advertising all over the place.
It'd be nice to go in and check it out.
Yeah, but we're, we're going to talk to GW about doing some kind of, when they do like a grand opening and we'll make sure the council.
Chamber hasn't reached out to them yet?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll check with the chamber, but we, we're going to be checking with them as well.
All right. Yeah, it's one of their bigger projects, it'd be nice to.
It's one of the biggest GW supermarkets in their entire chain.
Now, GW and the fitness place are not same owner, it's different owners?
No, different ownership.
Different, yeah. They just happen to be there together.
Right.
Do you recall how many charging stations they put into that parking lot?
The, the proposals for 40 charging stations at the former location of the Denny's Restaurant.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, thanks.
In terms of long-range planning, the city council approved the objective design standards for R2 developments. We, city council also amended the zoning code regarding to urban dwellings and lot splits. That's otherwise known as SB9. We, council also approved changes to the Low Impact Development and Green Streets ordinance. We've started an SB9 constraints analysis in 2023. We hope to bring that to you in 2024. And we made significant progress on the housing element work programs. And we'll continue to be working on that into 2024 as well.
And we, we haven't had any SB9.
No.
No. Cases, right?
In terms of community preservation, for those watching at home or those in the audience, community preservation is what this community calls code enforcement. So we kind of use the change, the terms interchangeably. Terms of community preservation, 2023, we saw almost the second highest number of cases opened. And then the number of cases closed and opened is typically very close, which is a good thing. That means we're closing out cases, we're not just opening cases. We're actually, we're actively working on them to make sure that they get managed and get closed.
Do these cases go to our city attorney then also?
No.
No.
The only, they, they will go if compliance is not achieved and we actually, actually file a case in court, that would go to the city prosecutor's office.
I mean, city prosecutor?
Yes.
Yeah. So that, are the office that we use, will you handle these cases as well?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Do we track how quickly cases get resolved?
I don't have a site on this, but it will be in the, the paper version of this report. It's somewhere around 50% of cases are closed within seven days. And then within 14 days, like 60 or 70% of cases are closed. That means that most of the, the, most of the issues we're dealing with are simple issues that people can fix within two weekends. So whether it's lawn maintenance or trimming a tree or things like that. Taking down holiday lights, that sort of stuff. And then just to give you a sense for the types of cases we open in community preservation, most, the vast majority of them are regarding property maintenance and hazards. There's also kind of a bit of right-of-way violations, building code violations, business license violations and zoning regulations. The next section I can't take too much credit for because my predecessor oversaw also public work. So partly, this is really the city manager's bread and butter. But he's been very busy with the Public Works Division paving streets. We paved nine miles of streets back in 2023. Um, we paved nine miles of streets back in twenty twenty-three. Um, that's more streets in terms of mileage um than twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two combined. And I think we have another big project in twenty twenty-four, so. Um, and then here's also some other public works figures, um, and parking figures. Um, we're back kind of where we were in terms of annual and monthly overnight parking permits that were approved. Um, the number of miles of streets we surfaced was nine. Um, we're also um pretty busy in terms of encroachment permits, but those numbers tend to range between three hundred and four hundred um a year.
Is there a reason why we moved the parking, uh, overnight parking thing from this side of the building to the other side of the building?
We were having some problems, one, with some vandalism issues.
Okay.
And there, and just in terms of service to the public as well, because that's Kaufman's the entry. And and Kaufman, that addresses the the entry to City Hall, so people can identify it, we can have it. It's right at Kaufman, it's right at the address of City Hall as well.
When did we do that?
About a year ago, maybe?
I don't remember ever being told, because somebody called me and said, hey, what happened to the parking permit? I said, I don't know, I used, was there last time I looked?
Yeah, we moved it.
I needed one about two months ago.
And it wasn't there? You went to the old place, huh?
Well, a citizen told me where it was. So I drove around the corner, it was there.
It it's also closer to the parking, so if you can park right on the street and walk just a few steps instead of having to walk around. More convenient.
And they can still buy them at Sheriff's Station.
And online. Station, online.
Well, online, that's where.
Online or in person at the counter.
Someone told me, though, that you can only get one night online. Where versus if you come in to the machine, you can get three nights. Is it, is that true? I I don't remember.
I don't think so, I think you can buy three nights at a time. You can buy multiple nights online, but we'll double, we'll look at, we'll look at.
Look at, see, because I I, someone told me that, and I said, well, I don't, no, I haven't.
You can buy multiple nights online.
Okay.
What's the most you can buy?
Three, I think, three consecutive nights. Yeah, at a time.
Is there any limit as to how many a person can get?
I think so.
No. Nope.
It's a little expensive, though.
Yes.
Thirty days would cost you what? I can do the math, but a lot of money.
How much is it a day?
Four dollars a day. Forty bucks.
In terms of total revenue for the for the department, um, we're doing, we've taken in quite a bit in comparison to where we were in twenty twenty. Um, and we've seen pretty much a steady rebound since then to where we were back in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Uh, mind you, these numbers are adjusted uh for inflation. And with that concludes my report of the Community Development Department. I would like to take a moment to thank the staff of the Community Development Department um for the good work that they do, considering the number of people we serve um in the community. Um, we see a lot of people who leave to, who leave the city, um, very happy with the service we provide. Um, and also wanted to thank Andrew Coyne, um, who does this every year, collects, has to work with people throughout City Hall to collect all the data, put it together in a plate way that's readable, um, so that it's understandable by all of you and the all the members of the public, so thank you to all of them.
When I walk in and I go by the counter.
Mm-hmm.
They have a very professional appearance.
Good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the report. All right, next we have a update from our city attorney.
Wait, no comments?
Oh, yeah, do you, oh, do you want to comment?
Well, I just wanted to thank Scott and uh, I I, I had asked the mayor, have we gotten this report before, or is this?
You've got it, you've got it, you've got it emailed to you. We we've never haven't, we've not done this this presentation this way.
And that's what I thought, I thought, well, this is aw- awesome, where where's this been?
This is good.
It's great, I thought it was great and I I'm sure we'll.
It's always been great, the email one.
Did I just, oh, the email one, oh, I don't know. I'm not reading, uh, this is better. Um, so what we can expect this like once a year then, or?
Yep, Scott's been producing it uh once a year for the last uh four years.
Oh, nine years.
And and prior to.
Well, I'm sorry, I just never paid attention.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. And this is, this is the way to to reach you and reach community members and we're happy to do it.
I think it's well set out and, good job.
Because I can't ask the email questions.
Yeah, I know, can't ask the email question.
You got a question?
How's our friend on on Golden West and Garibaldi?
Uh, yeah, that that court case uh came to a close, they're now in full compliance.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
How do you monitor that?
Uh, we actually have a service uh called Homari that um proactively monitors um cases for um uh compliance with the city's short-term ordinance. So the staff can go in and see if a site is being listed um outside of the city's rules.
They still have the Christmas lights on. Just saying.
What's the date on that? What is the date that you're supposed to turn your lights on?
Uh, according to the code, it's uh two weeks after the holiday that's being celebrated. But we don't tend to start enforcement until the middle of January.
Although.
What about February for the?
Well, there's always a holiday coming up somewhere, but uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can have lights up on your house that are just lights, right? I mean, and and not really say, well, this, these are Christmas lights. Let's say you decide to put a string of white lights up. How is that, how do we handle something like that?
So there's, there's two different sections of the code that deal with this.
And maybe this is way beyond, and I I'm sorry, Greg's going to start getting all upset in a minute, but.
But one is, one is the public nuisance section of the code that says um lights, holiday lights should not be up more than two weeks after the date, okay?
That that was clear.
The other one is the building code, which states that if you're going to have up um electrical lights, that they need to meet the electrical code. Um, if you have cafe lights, those tend to be to, those are heartier lights that tend to meet the electrical code. Um, but the 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 Christmas lights are not meant, they're not built to be up all year long, so they don't meet the electrical code.
All right, thank you. Any more questions for the director? All right, thank, thank you. All right, next, uh, update from our city attorney.
Uh, no report tonight, sir.
Thank you. Council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings?
We had the audit, uh, I thought, we had, Vincent and I had the um, met with our auditors, um, it was a week ago or so. Um, great report, everything looks clean, we got a, what do they call it? I forget the name they call it.
Unmodified opinions, which is a clean audit.
Yeah, clean audit, and uh, I think that's coming back to us next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting that will be presented, but in all, uh, very good report and staff has done fantastic job as they always do and we're doing well, so we'll hear more about that that at our next meeting, but everything looks good.
Great. Any other committee meetings? No? All right, we move to items separate from the regular agenda, starting with council member Viscara.
I really don't have anything in particular. But I I'm now in that phase of phasing out and it's really weird, so I'll just say that.
All right, well.
I won't get much of yours.
Well, don't phase out for two, another month.
I know, but you very much become aware of it.
Yeah.
Thank you, council member Viscara. All right, council member Sternquist?
What is this, um, ad hoc or?
No, just uh items separate from the.
Oh, okay, um, attended the Founder's Day celebration for the school district.
That was the Donna for Arcoona, right?
Yes, Donna received a service award, volunteer service award. Um, and the superintendent received a administrative, was it administrative award, right, Jerry, for him? And I think both e- so equally deserved, um, they spoke to just Donna's dedication of being, you know, so engaged and involved with the schools, the the different things that each of the schools are doing. And um, Dr. Kuna, they mentioned that he is just such a hands-on administrator. He is, you know, tying kids' shoes, he's out walking, talking to the children, so I think he's very well-loved in the community, but it was, it was a really nice um dinner and they had a really nice presentation on the history of the Founder's Day, and so it was really nice to see it.
Well, well-attended?
It was really well-attended, I think. Yeah, there wasn't a place to sit, so it was pretty full and it was at Livo Park.
They they have it there every year, I believe. Last year it was also there.
Was it, uh, a couple of the?
Where was it? The commu- community center, Livo Park?
Yeah, so they really enjoy having it at the community center because, maybe it was prior to last year, though, they had, I don't know where they had it, but they said it was expensive.
They had it at Livo last year.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we went last year.
Yeah, that's right, we did go.
Maybe before COVID then. But um, they're very happy at the thought of possibly being able to use that yearly with a joint use agreement.
It's on the list.
It's on the list. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Mayor Proten Chavez?
Thank you. Um, let's see, I, last, this last weekend, I had the good fortune to attend the uh, we call it the T-Casa, but it's the Temple City. What is it?
Amateur softball.
Amateur uh softball association, yeah, um, they had their opening, a little early, but uh, they got in under the rain, so that was nice. Um, the uh, Camellia Court was there and did their thing and uh, good people. Um, I I had a recall that, I think you and I were still on the Parks and Rec uh when we approved that.
It was established.
It's been sixteen years now that they've been there. So, i- it seems like their enrollment's a little bit down. They only had like four teams, I think, or something like that? Adam, do they, do you know? They, they have, they don't have a whole lot of teams, I don't think, in that league, right now.
In order for them to really operate, they have to interleague, so.
So, yeah, that's what I figured, they interlock with with other cities probably or organizations, but but it was good, good opening, nice and good to see them out and we've got the um, our, both of our little leagues opening, uh, March. I think uh, Temple City National opens March second or March first, whatever that Friday is. March first, and then March second is a Temple City American League opening. So, here we go again, baseball season's here, so. Um, other than that, I think it was pretty quiet, so that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we we're about to have a very busy weekend coming up, so I know the Camellia Festival and the committee members are working in full force. And uh, I I think Mary Sneed reminded me that the, I guess, the one privilege of being mayor is being part of the float judging. So, yes, early. Uh, but I'm looking forward to that, it was fun the last time I did it, and so I I'm really looking forward to seeing the creativity from all the kids. It's always a really fun part. And uh, as Mr. Cook mentioned earlier, uh, we do have uh our sister city from Hualien, Taiwan, coming over, so uh, they they will also be a part of the parade and um, they're bringing quite a, quite a delegation, so I was, I was, I'm so surprised that at at them bringing, I almost feel like they brought their whole city staff. I I don't know, I I don't know how big their staff actually is, but it just, it just felt very large. They're staying at the Sheraton in San Gabriel, so they'll, they'll be very close by.
How many, do, we have to have a head count, don't we?
It's about fifty people.
Fifty, geez.
Yeah.
That's, but that includes the.
The students, I think there's about sixteen or so. Yeah, and I also want to extend my thanks to the uh, school district for hosting them for part of one of the days, because I think that was one of the goals of getting them over was so that the their high school students can get a chance to engage with our students. Uh, they did that last time they came here in twenty twenty and uh, the feedback from them was tremendous in terms of um, for a lot of these students in Taiwan, it's the first time they've come to the US. So in in a way, we're kind of setting the bar or standard for what America is like for them.
You know, William, I heard recently that um, is it Longton or Emperor? I forget, that has the uh group of students, ten students from China in our elementary school, is that Emperor?
It's Emperor, yeah.
Yeah, I've thought, I had never heard of it, but I guess. Do they stay for, throughout elementary school? Do you, does anybody know?
Was that from mainland or or Taiwan?
From, from mainland China, yeah. I, that that was something that I know, um, Connie Wu from from the school district, she was instrumental in putting, putting that together. Uh, I don't know enough about the details of that program. Um, but but kind of, that example is kind of the reason why now might be a good time to engage the school district, I mean, between, of course, Hualien County and them. If there was some opportunities with that.
Is from mainland China?
The one that Cindy's.
Emperor, that I.
Really?
Was actually, well, my neighbor works at Emperor, so she was telling me that they were looking for, I don't know if it's for next year, but for homes to house the students.
Don't Taiwan and China not get along? Is that their, their political issue?
But it, I, we don't have kids from the Taiwan program in our schools.
No, I know that.
But this is at the elementary school. I was just quite surprised because I thought, wow, they're so young and they, they leave their families and they come and get a host family here and go to school in our schools, but it would be nice to just get some information from um, the school district as to what that program is.
Yeah, and I think part of the goal was uh, on the day that the district is hosting them, which is Tuesday after the Camellia Festival. Uh, the, the idea was to kind of get them talking, I mean, we aren't really too directly involved with that kind of a communication. That's really something, if the district was interested in, they obviously have certain terms and parameters for which they would like to operate something like that if they already done so. Um, so it's a matter of seeing if both sides can figure out if there's a way they can make it work.
If I recall the last, when they came, they had s- a smaller group of students, right, when they came? How long ago was that?
Oh, you mean back in twenty twenty?
Yes.
I I think the number of students was approximately the same.
Were they, but they were older.
They were all high school age, yeah.
So they're familiar with how that operates, would be nice to incorporate them into the school district somehow, since they're, they are our sister city.
Yeah, so that that's, a- again, it it'll, it's all conceptual right now, and so the actual implementation, there's a lot of things that the district would have to consider as well. Because, I mean, the idea is you want to, the the district has to see a benefit in that. Um, you can't like force the issue, so, so we're we're hoping this could somehow organically happen.
If they're already doing it in an elementary level, I would think that the high school would might be a little bit easier. I mean, it's hard with, I I guess they both, you can have difficult high school students that could be more more difficult than elementary students, I mean, it just depends, but.
High school students difficult?
Uh, some, yeah. Maybe, maybe the tenth graders.
So, so we're we're hopeful, we'll see how that goes. Um, so I I'm looking forward to that. Uh, and then, I guess for my, for myself, um, I didn't realize the state of the city was just next week.
Isn't the mayor giving it?
Probably. Yeah, so I I am looking forward to that. I I do want to thank uh, city staff, especially Liz Ortiz and Iliana Flores. And of course, um, all the, all of our department heads and staff that helped contribute to that presentation, I truly appreciate it. It's, it's a lot, I mean, even just looking at the uh, community development report, you could see that a lot has gone on, so likewise, just city-wise, uh, there there's a, a lot of great things to to talk about, especially in the context of uh, of the centennial, so. All right, um, we'll move on to the, I almost forgot we had this item on our agenda. Uh, the recess to the successor agency. Uh, so we will now recess to that and call that meeting to order. Uh, can we get a roll call, please?
Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman?
Here, consent calendar can be approved in one motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second, can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Agency member Sternquist?
Yes.
Agency member Viscara?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Unfinished business, we have none, new business, none, communications, none. Uh, any public comments on the successor agency? All right, seeing none, we will close public comments. Update from executive director and agency council? None. Matters from agency members, seeing none. We adjourn from our successor agency and reconvene as the city council. And now we will hear additional public comments on items not on the agenda. We have a speaker request. So, uh, we have, I believe, Ms. Li Xie, Shirley?
Yes.
Xie, if you could come up to the podium? And um, and I know you, you gave us this paper and uh, please.
Everybody paper.
Yes, yes, thank you, and and please, please do keep in mind. Could you stand next to the microphone, please?
But today, I want to tell something again. But today, I want to tell something again. I forget it. Take glass. Most respectful council member, friends, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I believe all must have heard about the broken and 6025 Camellia Avenue, Tampa City. This happened more than a month ago. But however, the case remained as even after police report was made. Complaints to City Hall was acknowledged and was also voiced out during the Tampa City Council meeting on January 16, 2024. I'm very confused. According to the law of California, stealing over line 50 is considered serious.
Excuse me, Ms. Xie. Ms. Xie, we have this letter that you gave to us, which you're reading right now. You are, I need to speak to you in English. You're reading this to us. Is there anything else besides this letter you want to add? She's asking if I can speak to her in Chinese, which, if you could please stand at the, okay, so.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
If you can do what you just did, sir, and speak to the member of the public and then let us know what was said, then the public will, the public watching at home will be fully informed and that will help the proceeding. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you. I've never done that before. So this is kind of strange. So what I'm about to tell her is that she gave us a document that has all the details of what she's trying to address the council. And she's reading it to us at the podium. Instead of taking the time to read this to us, I would like her to, I want to acknowledge to her that we have this in front of us. And if there's anything in addition to this that she would like to add. Okay. So. Can, you can, you can in the后面讲吗？在那个 microphone. Please speak in the microphone.
Why I want to speak? I mean, in the other way. Sorry. Do you know how many big cases in Tampa City? I think very least, maybe only me, only mine. So please, must pay attention to this big case. I'm looking forward, hoping my government and the police station together worker to solve this case. I lost so much jewelry. It's my husband to buy before, but he is a passerby. So I'm very sad. So I hope my government and police station together can, this my landlord, Wenxiao Lu, he's do this. So.
Okay. Ms. Xie, and Greg, I think she might understand this better if I say to her in Chinese. But I'll, what I'm about to ask her is that we address this matter separately from public comment. We do have our sheriffs here. We have our city manager here. And I think in that manner, without time constraints, she can better outline what she wants to say to us and what further concerns she may have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir.
好的，好的。好的，好的。那我
谢谢，谢谢。
反正自己也有。
对对。So we, yeah, so we acknowledge receipt of our papers.我们收到这张纸，我们再跟你联络。Thank you. All right. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council? All right. Seeing none. We are adjourned.